Great, this is, hi everybody, this is the March 24, 2022, special meeting of the Rockport Planning Board. The purpose of this meeting, and really the sole purpose of this meeting, is for us to go through the zoning bylaw amendments, once again, we've gone through them many, many times, but we can do it again to basically talk about proposed changes from, that resulted from our meeting with the zoning board of appeals last week, and also from Amy Quizzle's comments. Ralph Wilmer of MAPC has done his best to, where he knows what the comments are, to incorporate changes into the bylaws, so they're either incorporated, or they're like a little comment. And you should have received that, his version of that, yesterday, 323, 2022. Today, I sent to him, which everyone received, a, just a list of a couple of things, which I thought should be addressed by him, and that was an email from me at 10:19 this morning. And he has addressed them, and he has done another version of the bylaws, which should have today's date on them, with his more recent changes addressing the comments that I had made. These are not big, nothing's big here, these are all just kind of housekeeping things that he's done, and you all can see them. I haven't actually looked at his latest version, but I know what he's supposed to have changed, so we can make sure after this meeting that we'll finally get to where we are in terms of a final version that we're all happy with, and then that will be the version that we submit to give to Mitch for cooperation in the warrant with the various divisions that we talked about previously, you know, the new sections being divided up and everything, but tonight, it's really, we're just gonna go over some of the comments. I'm, you know, I may be leading this off, but by no means being the only person who needs to speak here. So I want to talk about, let's see, where do we want to start here? We, some of the comments were directly related to just, again, housekeeping, how it's listed in the bylaws, the apparently there were, you know, we have some, some special permits, in fact, most special permits that are with the zoning board of appeals, and then a few that are with the planning board. And Amy Quizzle, the town's lawyer, suggested that we list them as special, SPZ for zoning board, and SPPB for planning board, which Ralph had a good idea, and has apparently done on this latest version, so that was done. That's, that's one thing that's out of the way, because the way it was written now, it seemed like the only special permit authority the planning board has was relation to the ADUs, but it's, you know, there are some other things existing, and also new that we have special permit authority for. Also, on page 22 of the bylaws, definition C, I don't know if everyone has this out, but if you don't, you should get it out. We have the short-term rental of rooms by person or persons residing on the premises, provided there is no sign or display to advertise such use. That was, that replaced the border, borders, which is really an archaic term, and so we, we changed that. I pointed out that there could be confusion with this section and the ADU prohibition against rentals.
Yep.
And so Ralph added a provision, add a little sentence to this, it said that this section does not apply to something to the effect that does not apply to the ADU provisions, in other words, so there's no, there are not going to be any short-term rentals with ADUs. Someone could be saying, well, we'll look at, you know, 4C, and look what it says, this is only for occupancies in existing homes that are not accessory dwelling units, okay? Anybody have any questions about that? Move on to the next one. Let's see. Yeah, we took that out, okay. We did talk about the parking lot for commercial vehicles, which is on page 24, item 5C, and what my comment was on that, that, well, we already have a new parking provision, so why do we have this? Because in, under the parking that we have now, parking is not a special permit use separately, it's, it's it's not a special permit unless you need to have waivers from the parking bylaws. And what Ralph explained, and I think he's correct, is that the reason this has a special permit use under the general zoning district is because this, this is talking about parking lots that are a thing unto themselves, in other words, they're not associated with another use, they're not accessory to a hotel, or a restaurant, or anything, but it's actually a parking lot for commercial vehicles, if you want a parking lot for commercial vehicles, so you know, that's a strange use, but it's there, so anyway, I thought, okay, that makes sense to me, so I didn't, I thought it was okay the way it was, but again, you know, if someone else has any thoughts on that, let me know. And I'm just going through now, here's pages 26 and 27. The, there was discussion, this is under page, actually page 28, this is rules, this is accessory dwelling units, this is a new section that we drafted, spent a lot of time on, had a lot of comments on, and we have in this section that the, one of the things that we discussed with the zoning board of appeals was the special permit authority under, if, if indeed, this is only attached accessory dwelling units, it doesn't apply to accessory dwelling units that are in a home, that if they can't meet setback requirements of the principal dwelling units, then they're going to need a special permit, and the question was, we have it as special permit from the planning board, the zoning board, I believe, wanted to say, no, we want to have it as the zoning board's jurisdiction, and you know, we, we didn't really discuss that before, but you know, we're, this is where we are, does anybody have any thoughts on that?
So, I'm a little confused, Jason, so I am looking at the table on page 18. Oh, I see, okay, never mind, you mind, I'm, what, what page are you on? I, I haven't
I'm on page, I'm working off of the March 23, 2022 version that Ralph sent, and I'm looking at page 28.
Yep. I had it in track changes mode, so I was getting mixed up with the pages, so hold on.
Believe me, this is on the verge of being incredibly confusing.
Right.
So many versions of this. I'm a little worried about it, and I, and I said to Ralph, you got a date, whatever version you have, you got to put the date on it on the day that you make the change, because we've now had at least three or four different versions, and
I'm working on the March 24 version, the one that came out today.
Yeah, well, that's the latest version now.
Yeah. The 23rd.
No, I don't know if that's different in terms of but my, on my page, on the 23rd, it's paragraph 5 is rules for detached accessory dwelling units, and it's now D, okay, is the section that we're talking about.
Okay, thank you, that's page 24 for me, for some reason.
Page 28, the very bottom.
What?
I'm looking at page 28, the very bottom, he's got section D.
All right, so it's page 24 for you, Denise?
Yeah, but I don't have track changes on, I turned them off.
Okay, well, that might be the issue.
Yeah.
That's probably the issue, because that's, that's way off.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, because mine's, mine's 28, too. Tom, what's yours?
I don't see it on page 28, I've got today's version.
Are you looking at it in Word, or a different, yeah?
In Word.
All right, well, look, the bottom line is, it's the same, no matter what page you're on. Same provision, and it's basically that says the attached dwelling unit must meet the setback requirements of the principal dwelling unit, as well as other applicable dimensional controls, except by special permit from the planning board, that's what it says.
May I ask a question? I just want to clarify, make sure we're all in the same document regardless of page. Tom, at the very top, it says draft March 24, 2022, original July 23, 2019. Is that what yours says? At the very top of the page.
You asking Tom this?
Yes, Tom and Denise.
Yeah, that's, I'm in that one, yeah.
The top of page one, mine says final version 322 of proposed changes.
You don't have the one that came out today.
Hey, Tom, look at, turn a couple of pages in, look at the, get off the table of contents, and look at the actual first substantive provision.
Well, the file name is 22020324, that's today, full markup version.
Yeah, that's, that should be the latest.
The one Ralph sent out earlier today.
All right, so after the introduction, it says draft 32422.
Right, well, that's it, okay, you got the latest of them all.
Yeah, but the pagination is screwed up, depending on what you're looking at for revision.
It, you know, the pagination can be different based on what program you're using, I found that out talking to Ralph, because we were, you know, he was talking about one page, and I was talking about another, I mean, this is, these are mechanical things that, well, we're going to have to sort out, but as long as we're looking at the same provision
in text.
Didn't change since last week, that's what counts, okay?
So the question at hand is, should the special permit, in the case of section 5D, be granted by the planning board or the zoning board of appeals? Is that right?
Now, it's the planning board, we had, we had put it at the planning board for a couple of reasons, one was, yeah, that this is a new provision, that we were very involved in the drafting, we thought that we would be able to administer it well, and that the other thing was, and this is important, that MAPC said to us that this was the majority of communities have the planning board in this situation as a special permit authority. Those two things, so we put it, that's where we put it, and the zoning board you know, didn't feel that we, they felt they should do it, and so we just have to decide, you know, are we going to keep it based on our original assessment and advice, and then, you know, we'll go to town meeting and see what, you know, and then that's, that'll be that, so, you know.
Okay.
You want to know what I think?
What do you think, Jason?
Yeah, I think, I think we should keep it because of a variety of reasons, and those are the two, and the ZBA, and as, and as we'll see as we go forward, the ZBA actually, we've, looking at some of these, I think we'll see that we've actually agreed with the ZBA on others, that they should have the a special permit authority, where, where it was a question mark, but this isn't one of them, so that's, that's what I think.
I'm good with that.
I concur.
Yes, okay, okay, so then let's move on to the next.
So, so Jason, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just want to, before, I want to make sure that at some point we get to the question of bulkheads that
Oh, right, bulkheads, I'm
Right at the beginning of the last joint meeting.
I have that in here, yeah, bulkheads, good point, thank you Denise.
Yeah.
Jason says backup.
Okay, back in, back in, because I, you know, look, it obviously needs some revision, because apparently it's in the definitions, but not in the body, but as the ZBA said, you know, they do refer to that. I didn't quite understand their rationale, but they do use it, and it's, you know, it's just not, let's leave it in, it'll make their life easier to have it in there, so.
I'm good with that, the only thing I suggest is that maybe for fall time meeting, we move the provision that defines how it's applied into the bylaws themselves.
Yes, I mean, there obviously has to be a change, and when we deleted it, we weren't aware that it was something that is relied on, but apparently is, so it'll stay. It's not, it's not critical, but it's something that needs to be there, and for fall town meeting, well, redo it, and hopefully I won't forget about it then, as I did now.
Thank you.
It stays, yeah, anybody else have something they want to bring to my attention, please do, so. Okay, so the next thing that I have is on, it's on my page 38, it's H, modification waivers from parking requirements. We want to see what Ralph did there, based on our conversations, this is actually based on our conversation last week with the zoning board of appeals.
Oh, Christ.
No, I don't think it was in there.
Give me a, give me a letter and a paragraph number here, right, it's on 38 for me.
It's, it would be F, this is on page 38, okay, I'll give you a
F for me is
Section 7, parking requirement.
Section 7, parking requirements, okay.
Do a control F line, would you, control F, and just put in a phrase to take you to that section.
7F, plans required.
7H.
H, waivers from parking requirements, okay, I'm with you.
Right.
It's on page 32.
You're on page 32, wow, okay, something's missing there. Six pages. All right, this what Ralph has done is changed that. It says, reads as follows, the board of appeals for projects with six or fewer parking spaces, or the planning board for projects with more than six parking spaces, may issue a special permit to waive strict adherence to the requirements of this section, et cetera, et cetera, so in other words, we, we hear what the ZBA was saying, if it's smaller, and not going to require site plan review, they have, they're the special permit authority, but once you get over six, six spaces, we are looking at site plan review and the parking posthaus, which makes sense, because there's no point in dividing the parking and the site plan review between two different boards, so that's what was done there.
That makes sense to me.
Makes sense to me, too.
Is 6 the right cut point for everybody?
Works for me.
Okay, yeah, so okay, the next one I have is on, it's on my page 44, it's housing balance.
Section I, Tom, it could be on your page 37.
Bingo.
I see what's going on here.
I, 37.
Yep.
Trying to divide and conquer the board. Your 44, my 37.
Well, it depends on whether you have the markups showing or not.
You sunk my battleship. Yeah, I have mine around.
Everyone find that?
Yeah.
Hold on one second. Um, let me just go back one second. Okay, actually, I have to correct this, because to be consistent with our, this is going back to the parking and the division of the special permit authority. The, I just wanted to take a look at site plan review. So site plan review, minor construction project, it's a construction of a parking lot with six or more parking spaces. Six or more becomes the planning board's jurisdiction. Five isn't. Okay, however, going back to the modify, going back to page 38, the board of appeals for projects with six or fewer parking spaces, I think that should be five.
Yes, I have a feeling.
Not, not six, because that makes it consistent with with the planning board's authority, and that way they dovetail together perfectly, okay? So let's change that back to five. Um, okay, now where are we?
Page 44, housing balance.
Balance, yeah, housing, okay, so that's one where, you know, the zoning board of appeals under 40B is the, is the permitting authority, I mean, they're the ones who have all the permitting authority there, and I think it would make sense to, for this housing balance to have, just have the ZBA being the permitting authority on, under this section.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so that's, that's what, that's zoning board of appeals.
Jason, everything under I, you're assuming is going to be 40B?
No, I'm not assuming that at all, I'm just saying it just makes sense for them to be the special permit authority rather than us. I'm not saying it's going to be 40B, no.
Look, look at paragraph 4, Tom.
UCD.
Yeah. I mean, that, that does tie into 40B, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so why would we get involved with that?
Exactly.
Well, that's if it's, all of, all of the section I is under 40B, or there are other things that would not be 40Bs?
There are other things that would not be 40Bs, but
Why, why would we want to divide the
Why?
Between the two boards, and under this section, it doesn't make a lot of sense. Do you have a reason, Tom?
Uh, no, it's just the statutory puts 40B to them, and that's what we would, you have to do that one, the other one is optional.
Yeah, I know, but, okay, so you don't have any objection to just making it uniform with the ZBA being the special permit authority under I?
Well, my objection to the section a long time ago was the 10%.
Okay, look.
That's statutory.
We're talking about just which body has special permit authority, and there may be things wrong with this section, but that's all that we're looking at right now, you know, we just didn't have the time to or the energy to kind of rewrite this, too, you know, in addition to everything else. So that, unless you have some reason that you want to share with us, I think
I can repeat what I've said before, at the 10% level, you never get above 10%, and then he
But Tom, we're not discussing that now.
About that, Tom.
And whether we agree with you or not, and I happen to agree with you, I still would say, keep it with ZBA, otherwise they'll just be going back and forth, and I could see a developer coming in and attempting to work one off the other.
Exactly.
Now, Jason had asked if there were any other issues with this section, and I said
No, any other issues with, any other concerns about making the ZBA the sole special permit authority under this section, that was my question. Because if there are, let's hear it, and if not, then we'll move on.
Move on, okay.
So the next one is a little bit more involved. Um,
It is so.
It's a ZBA issue, and this is this is on my page 67, and maybe on your page like 63, Tom, I'm not sure. Or whoever has the pages, this is under the coastal floodplain district. I talked with some people about this already. See if I, give me one second. Okay, I got the regulation now. All right, let's just go over this. One second. Or, this is board of appeals, it says Use Regulation C, and it's Roman numeral nine, everybody on the same page here? On this, it's board of appeals, which is at the end of the section.
Under coastal floodplain district?
Yeah.
What's the paragraph letter?
I got, well, it was
It's page 58, Tom.
I'm at 58.
Yeah, okay, I'll read it, just to make sure that we're all looking at the same thing. In the coastal floodplain district, the board of appeals, this is what was there, may grant a special permit for new construction or substantial improved structures to be erected on a lot of one-half acre or less in size contiguous to, and surrounded on all sides by lots with existing structures constructed below the base flood elevation in accordance with variance requirements set forth in section 44 CFR 60.6, which is the code of federal register. That's what 60.6 refers to, because there's a whole federal overlay on this zone. And let me just tell you what section 60.6 says, 44 CFR 60.6, at least in in part, because it's, you know, I don't want to read the whole thing. But it says it talks about variance, it's, the title of this section is variances and exceptions, that's the title, and it says here, and listen to this language, because it may sound familiar, um, variances Variances may be issued by a community for new construction and substantial improvements. To be erected on a lot of one-half acre or less in size contiguous to. And surrounded by lots with existing structures constructed below the base flood level. In a conformance with the procedures of paragraphs A, three, four, five, and six of this section. And three, four, five, and six are a whole. Uh, section relating to. Variances, when they should be granted, section three says they should only be granted. By, by a community, meaning Rockport, upon a showing of good and sufficient cause. That's one, a determination that failure to grant the variance would result in exceptional hardship to the applicant and three. Determination that granting of a variance will not result in increased flood heights. Additional threats to public safety, extraordinary public expense, create nuisances, cause fraud. On or victimization of the public or conflict with existing local laws or ordinances. That's what the federal said, federal guidelines, not guideline, federal regulations said. So essentially what I'm looking at this and I'm saying, wow, this bylaw. Is exactly the same in terms of its language as the federal regulation. This isn't something someone made up. I think the problem, at least for me, was. The way it was written, it says, in the coastal floodplain district, the Board of Appeals may grant a special permit. And what it should say, I think, no, no new language here. Uh, in the coastal floodplain district, the Board of Appeals may grant a special permit. In accordance with variance requirements set forth in forty-four CFR sixty-point-six. In other words, if a special permit under this provision is not. Your garden variety special permit, which is very loose language and, and the zoning board or any board could go. Either way, that they have to use the variance requirements. In section sixty-point-six of the Code of Federal Register to grant that special permit. I, I believe that was the intent. It's, it was, I don't think drafted that well, so that, that got lost because it was put at the end of the sentence. But. That's where we are with that. That, that's, the special permit is not a garden variety special permit for the. Board of zoning appeals.
Why does the language in the federal regulation refer to variance and our regs refer to? Our bylaws refer to special permits?
Good question.
Question, good question, because, well, because whoever wrote our regulation wasn't. Really paying a lot of attention, it seems to me, and I apologize if you're listening, but. I, I would think that would be the question anybody would ask, and two. Because this variance. In the, in the Code of Federal Register is not your typical variance. That you get in, in state, you know, property bylaws, I mean, it's. It's different, it's, it's a federal description of what is allowed for a variance. So it's different from what being like a variance in the, you know, Rockport. Uh, ZBA variance, so, yeah, I agree with you. It could have been better. I think if you move that last. Part, the last, last two lines in accordance with variance requirements set forth in forty-four CFR. If you move that higher in the section. It tends to make it clearer. Uh, what's meant by this, and it has nothing to do, by the way, with floods or destruction or anything like that. It's just, it's an, a provision that says that allows. A variance to be granted if a property of less than a half acre is surrounded by other. Existing structures that are there but don't meet. That are below the flood, base flood level. That's the only time this applies. Has nothing to do with what was discussed, thrown out at the last meeting about, well, what if there's a hurricane and what if. Bear's connect is destroyed, or you know, that, nothing to do with that.
Well, no, I read, I read the CFR language and there's provision given for that.
Yeah, that's a different, but that's not this provision. That's, that's not this. So, is it perfect? No, I, you know, if anybody has. I think with moving that.
Well, I think you have to eliminate reference to special permit as well, because it's inconsistent with the variance requirement clause.
Well, what, what Jason is saying is that the special permit is the wrong term. It's, it's a special permit. Yeah, but it's not a variance under forty-four CFR sixty-point-six is not the same as a Rockport bylaw variance.
It's, look, does this, could this thing be rewritten? Yeah, could the coastal, the whole coastal thing be? Probably the coastal floodplain district be rewritten? Probably, but. Here's our option if. Well, right now it's eliminated completely, which is a little strange because.
Right.
It's allowed under the federal. Uh, regulation. If. If we make any substantive changes to this, then we're looking at a new public, another public hearing.
Yeah, I say we leave it as it was originally, and then maybe work for the Fall Town Meeting to fix the language so that it's clearer.
I don't agree. Are we really making a substantive change?
Well, we're, we're not, Harry.
Cleaning it up.
Well, if we, first of all, if we move the language at the end to the beginning, I talked to council about this. That's not substantive change, that's fine, she said.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we could do that, and that, in my mind, that, that makes it clearer because.
Yeah.
To read this thing, that, that language at the end of the paragraph gets lost, but actually really important.
Yep. Yeah, I'm good with that.
I'm not. Let me, let me tell you what I've told you before. We originally eliminated this from the revisions that went to the hearing. Because it allows infill development in a flood district. And that is certainly the wrong direction to go. We do not want more development in flood district, we want less. And I read CFR forty-four sixty, sixty-point-six, there's a warning in there. It said the administrator, meaning the FEMA guy, may review a community's findings justifying the granting of variances, and if that review indicates a pattern. Inconsistent with the objectives of sound floodplain management, administrator may take appropriate action under fifty-nine point two-four-B. And that action is to make a community ineligible for flood insurance. So we're opening ourselves up here to doing something that's inconsistent with good, sound floodplain management. And losing flood insurance. I think this is a highly dangerous move and the wrong direction for. For climate change adaptation.
I think what that means, Tom, is that if there's a pattern of disregard. Which I'm sure the ZBA would never do, if there's a pattern of disregard of the standards. For variance in sixty-point-six, yeah, you're right. That the federal administrator could come in, could step in. But if, if that, if the variant required, well, first of all, if the variance requiring is followed, that, that's in.
How do we open ourselves up to criticism? How do we, if we're, if we're effectively mirroring the CFR. Which I think is what you're proposing that we do, how do we open ourselves up to potential loss of. Flood insurance? I, I don't follow that logic.
Well, I guess the other thing I would mention, Tom, is that we have to provide annual reports. To the flood insurance administrator of any permits that are granted, so I don't think we'd ever get to that point. Because we're, we'd be providing these permits. I'm curious to know if, if this sort of thing has ever been approved. That we've ever had to grant one of these permits.
Am I one of these variances?
Uh, yeah, one of these variances, sorry.
I don't know who's here who could answer that. Um, I, I hear what you're saying, Tom, but what you're saying, number one, is. That would be a course of conduct, and I don't think we have that. I know we don't have that at this point. That they would be looking at, not, in other words, the language is, is fine, the language mirrors. The, in the federal rate regulation, so who could complain about that?
I can complain. I don't want any more development in a floodplain.
No, I, I hear you.
So, so Mitch, do you have any way of checking how many permits have been granted? It says we, we provide it in our annual report and to the flood insurance administrator. Do you have any way of checking that?
I, I'm actually not sure, like, let me see what I can find. Probably be Paul Orlando who would have all that, but let me see if I can get my hands on something now. I'm, I'm not sure that I will be able to. I'll check.
Okay, thank you.
I think this is the kind of thing that will become increasingly an issue as.
Let me just say this, we're, this is March of two thousand twenty-two, our next. Town meeting after this one in May of sixteenth will be sometime in the fall of two thousand twenty-two. If this section with your. Good knowledge and work is revisited, the entire section, not just this little.
Right, right.
Now and fall, you, I mean, do you think we'll, that'll be okay?
I mean, I think all are, you know, going through the by, the zoning bylaws with an eye to that, Tom, not just, you know, sea level rise. But overall, climate change is a good idea.
I, I have a question for Tom on this. If, if he's not okay with this, what's his recommended solution?
We do what we already did, take out these paragraphs.
And that protects us?
Yep.
Okay.
Then there's no provision for the variance.
And there's no provision to follow the regulation?
Nor are we, yeah, I mean.
So it's the Wild West anyway?
Yeah.
No. There's nothing in the bylaw that says you can escape this, the other provisions in the other paragraphs.
Well, you can, then you can build in the coast, you can build at the. What's the language? You can build at the base flood elevation. Below the base flood elevation.
These paragraphs to allow you to build below.
Right, so without these paragraphs, you can build there without any guidance.
You, you can be, you can build at or above, that's correct.
What's gonna prohibit people from building below if we don't have these paragraphs?
There's nothing that allows them to build below.
There's nothing that prohibits them either.
Correct.
Them, then they can do it.
I don't read it that way.
You know, unless, unless there's a prob, the way our laws operate, unless there's a prohibition. Unless it's prohibited, it's allowed, you know, we're not, the loud is prohibited, so, you know, it's.
I would rather, Tom, like, and take the time to review. The zoning bylaws with an eye toward climate change overall, not just sea level rise. And make recommendations that we can take to town meeting. Um, that, that's the focus of that set of changes or proposed changes. So that we can think this through rather.
Dude, there's a very complex interaction here, which I'm not conversant with. Between the federal government and the local government. And, you know, this obviously, whoever drafted this provision for the bylaw. Was obviously aware of this regulation because they copied it essentially. And. I don't, I don't feel comfortable. Because of my lack of knowledge to make a real substantive change that might. Be something we don't want to do, we find out later we don't want to do. If this provision is applicable in such limited circumstances. Where you have a property that's surrounded by other, they've got to be contiguous. And they've got to be below the base flood elevate flood level, and. They've got to surround this property and it's got to be less than a half acre. I mean, all these things have to fall into place for this to even. For this variance to even be looked at, so between now and fall of two thousand twenty-two. My sense is we're okay, we're safe with leaving this the way it is with this. Change in emphasis that I've suggested and leaving it, and then when we get to fall of two thousand twenty-two. Tackling the entire. Section, taking a look at it and seeing what needs to be redone. I agree with you, Tom, I agree with you, but, you know, it's like, why not do it in a more comprehensive way?
Right.
Well, I thought we had M A P C agreeing it was okay to remove it.
Well, they didn't really agree substantively. I mean, they just, they didn't say anything. We just said, okay, we're gonna remove this, and they said, okay. They, I don't think they looked at this. I know they didn't look at this regulation. I know they didn't.
Question, Jason?
What?
Question for you. When you, when you were speaking with town council on this matter. By making this subtle change, which wouldn't trigger public comment. Was it an improvement? Was it better for the town, in effect, to make this subtle change? And keep this language in the bylaw?
Yeah, she, she understood what I was suggesting. She thought it was. A good change to make because it changed. It changed the emphasis, because right now where it is at the end of the sentence, you might. Someone might not even realize that that special permit has to be. In accordance with the variance requirements, because that's special permits in like the. Like the second line, and this is down at autumn, and you might not put the two and two together, but when you put them together, there won't be any question about that.
And, and, and special permits are issued regularly, routinely, I would say, whereas variances are, are not.
Yeah, and especially looking at the, the variance standard in the sixty-point-six, it's pretty tough. And I would, the, the special, the ZBA would need to make all the findings that they need to make. To, if they were gonna decide that this is an appropriate variance or not, to make the appropriate findings as to why it is or it is.
The applicant has to submit proof of extreme hardship.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, it's, it's just like a regular old variance now. I mean, a, a used variance. Man, I've dealt a lot with these in my career. You've got to show dollars and cents proof. You should, that you can't make a go of it without the used variance. You have to show the money part of it, and here it says. The hardship has to be exceptional, which is not just a mere hardship, an exceptional hardship. And you have to eliminate increased flood heights, additional threats to public safety, extraordinary public expense. Creating nuisance or conflict with existing local laws or ordinances. All those have to be eliminated. To get the variance. To me, that makes it almost impossible for someone to get if the standard is applied correctly. That's.
I, 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 I think, I believe we're better protected if we leave this language in here and make that subtle change. By moving CFR sixty-point-six to the beginning and, and eliminate reference to special permit.
I, I tend to agree with you. Okay, so, I mean, we, we've got three people who I think are in favor of this. I know, Tom, you're not, but. You'll have your opportunity. On more than just this. On more than just this, so, you know. Yeah. Okay, um. Any other? Anything else here? There was one little typo, but I'm not even going to talk about that. So minor. I I think.
I I just want to, I just want to record of saying, Tom, I agree with you as well. I just think that we're going to have unintended consequences if we don't think this through more thoroughly.
Well, I hope we can uh. Take some. Action to correct this in the future before long.
Agreed.
Yeah, I agree too. I mean, this is, this is one of those sections that probably hasn't been. Looked at for quite some time and could probably use um. And I, with someone who is, you know. As we all should be uh, familiar with the, you know, the threat of. Climate change, so. Yeah.
Uh, Jason, that minor minor change you mentioned, was that the?
It was T O V O D, the left off the O D. It's just, it's a complete typo, so.
There was one word, there was one word that was changed from. On to of and then changed back to on for the coastal banks.
Yeah, I saw that. That was weird.
It should be, it should be of.
Of, yeah, great.
Okay. What page?
The previous page.
I'm looking at that. Previous page, that would be page sixty.
It's under other other use regulations, number E, that's uh, number three.
E, yeah, E three.
E three.
Oh, all right, wait, E three. Well, guess what? I'm missing a page here. Go from sixty five to sixty seven. And what page is this on?
Uh, in the all markup page, it is sixty six. If you're looking at it with markups, it's page sixty six.
Yeah, I'm I'm missing that. But so what should I, I'm going to write this down. So it should be um.
Yeah, I see that. I see it too.
On, is it correct now or not correct?
It's not correct. It's reading on the coastal banks. One should read of the coastal banks, landward of the coastal bank.
Okay. Okay. I will change that when I get my page sixty six.
And that's another area that needs a little more work when you get around to uh, the climate change stuff.
Yep, agreed.
Well, you you're going to spearhead this, right, Tom?
Oh, yeah. I I'm up for reelection, by the way, and I'm hoping I'll be here to do it.
I'm sure you will.
I'm sure you will too. All right, um, that's all I have.
Well, didn't, didn't the ZBA also ask us, I I thought there was one more um, about. Um, special permits, was it in the in the T O V O D?
Oh, yeah, well, T O V O D, I mean, I think that. That's uh, even there's even um. Remember Peter mentioned this.
Yeah.
I mean, that we're doing the special, we're doing the site plan review. We should be doing the special permits. I mean, that's.
Yep, just wanted to make sure we said that.
Yeah. I think that's all of the uh, content that we. And and by the way, um. I didn't go over it all, but Ralph took the comments. From um, Amy Quizzle. Some of them were just, you know, really dramatical things and. And and made the changes. I don't think we need to go over all those. They're really minor. Um. So. And and anything that she suggested like substantive, uh, it's just. We do, we're not changing that now. You know, it's something to be looked at for the future, but. Not not at this point. Nothing bad. Everything's good.
So, in terms of making this now available to the public. When do we expect it to be out there? In a version that people can. See the changes that we're making and follow them without trying to digest the whole thing. And I I sort of, I sort of regret having said that because I think they should read the whole thing. Um, we're we're making wholesale changes and we're cleaning up quite a bit of. Inconsistency that found its way into the document over the years.
Yeah, well, they'll they'll, you know, everything's going to be redlined. Um.
Okay.
This is it's been, and that's the way, once we get these latest ones done, um. It will be again posted on the website. With the date, so everyone will know that they've got, you know, the most recent version of it. And that's going to be the version, because I think we're kind of, we're like a funnel at this point. We started at the. Mouth of the funnel and we've now gone down to the very base. We've whittled things down and whittled them down and whittled them down, and we're at a point now where we've got it down to. Um. Where we're done. For now, I mean.
We're never going to be done.
Well, never going to be done, but at least. Yeah, next fall or next or next spring of two thousand twenty three, probably, but, you know. With this, this is enough for now.
Any uh. Any opportunity to just comment on what's going on um, on K band as it relates to zoning articles?
You know, let's um. I think I was thinking about that, but we should probably wait till our regular meeting.
Okay, yep, yeah, I, that's why I asked it.
No, there there are things I want to say tonight too, but. I think we can wait to our regular meeting and uh, talk about that. And if anybody out there. Who's listening to this, you know, they can talk about this at the regular meeting if they want to also, um. And. You know, all I can say is we've um. We've, I think, worked pretty hard on this, thought about it, and um, have a pretty good product.
We uh, our next regular meeting is in two weeks.
May seven, uh, April seventh.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, so. That's all I have. A motion?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay, motion made to. Seconded. Um, roll call. Hi. Denise?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
I'll also move to adjourn. Meeting is adjourned. It's uh.
Seven twenty nine.
Eight or twenty nine, depending on what your watch says, and um, meeting's adjourned. Thank you, folks, and uh. We'll see you, um, see you on the seventh.